Thank you for joining us. This is part of our interview series for the Democratic Party of Evanston Endorsement Vote. So as you, as some of you may remember, we typically hold the big endorsement event every year at the Unitarian Church. We get in a big room, have the candidates stand up on stage for two minutes and talk about themselves, and then everybody gets to vote. Obviously, we can't do that this year. So we thought we'd stretch these out to a 30-minute interview where you get to hear from the candidate. And a lot of you have submitted some questions that we're going to be asking. And I hope these are really informative for you all. So remember, the endorsement votes begin on January 17th. We're going to be using the election runner website, selectionrunner.com, to cast the votes. It's a secure system that I understand a lot of sororities and fraternities use for their elections. And everything's verifiable for people who are better at computers than I am. So yeah, oh, and it begins on the 17th and it ends on January 23rd. So if you're not a member yet, you can go to our website and sign up for a membership either as a dues-paying member or if you prefer to volunteer and get your membership that way, you can reach out to us and we'll find some special elections coming up that you can get involved in and then become a member that way. So my name is Greg Andrus. I'm the Vice President of the Democratic Party of Evanston. I'm joined here by Mara, who is our Secretary of the Board and District 65 School Board Member running for reelection, Sue LaKim. So why don't you take a minute and take a minute or two and tell people about yourself?
Yeah, thanks. My name is Sue LaKim. And I joined the board after a vacancy this past spring. And I applied shortly before the pandemic, so I did not fully appreciate what I was getting myself into. So I am fairly new to the board. But I've been involved in efforts in District 65 on a volunteer basis for several years. You know, starting at Lincoln where my, both my children attended. I now have a middle schooler at Nichols and a third grader at Lincoln. And I got involved in the PTA efforts. But I wanted to, I was much more interested in equity efforts from, you know, thinking about what, where I wanted to put my energies and my focus and my volunteering at the schools. And just learning about the persistent opportunity gap among students by race. And, you know, learning about the segregated history of Evanston. It really seemed like, you know, we ought to be doing more. We ought to be, if we are involved in our school communities, we should be addressing the big structural challenges that we have. So that's where my involvement began. I also, this was when I learned about the curriculum. And there were a group of parents who were trying to revise the social studies curriculum. You know, I learned that we were still using a 40-year-old curriculum around pioneer days, a very Eurocentric focus in the social studies curriculum. And, you know, I thought these efforts to revise the curriculum, to be more culturally responsive and to be more accurate to real American history was a great effort. And so that was the, probably the first time I spoke in front of the school board. So this was, this got me connected to other parents who are interested in pushing for equity in our schools. And my next involvement was with the Next Steps Planning Committee, where we organized education and action programming around books and ideas around equity in schools. And I've been involved with that for the past three years. In my day job, in my professional life, I am an educator. I am the Assistant Dean of Graduate Programs at Northwestern School of Professional Studies. My background is in English literature. I earned my PhD in English from the University of California, Irvine, many years ago now. So I've been working in education all my professional life. And it means a great deal to me. I think education can be and should be a transformative experience for all of our students. All of our students, no matter their background or their income or their family circumstances, should have access to a high-quality education where they have opportunities to learn and explore their curiosity and develop themselves as human beings. And I think public schools are the institutions where that can and should happen. And public schools are public goods. They're not, it's a public good, not a public goods, I guess, or private goods. So what does it mean to be a public good? I think it means that we are all responsible for its stewardship. We are all responsible for the way it works. And if it works better for some groups than for others, that's a problem. And we are all responsible for addressing those structural challenges that have been with us historically for hundreds of years since the founding of this country. So I think we all need to participate in making our public good as good as it can be. I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. So Mara?
Thank you. So like you said, you started in March and got, you know, right into a whole new world of educating students. So we're just going to start off with some questions about this new way of learning. So D65 had to create a program to provide technological assistance to students who didn't have it. Do you believe the accommodations have been adequate? Or what kinds of changes or adjustments do you think the program would require?
Well, I think the, the district did, made a tremendous effort in getting devices to all the families, reaching out to them. And then the next challenge was ensuring that everyone had good internet access. And so, you know, distributing those hotspots and making sure that it's working. And then having the support staff to troubleshoot. And I've heard mostly good things about how responsive and helpful our tech support staff has been. So I think all of those things were rolled out very quickly. And as far as I understand, fairly comprehensively. I know there are still, I think the challenge is, even if we have the devices in the hands of our students, we know not all students are logging in or, you know, participating on a consistent basis. And I think that's a perpetual challenge, right? That our educators and our administrators have to deal with in reaching out to students, you know, by email, telephone, you know, visits, and reaching them to make sure that, first of all, that they're safe and okay. And then, second of all, trying to support their education as well as possible. So I think that's, that's going to be a perpetual challenge.
Thanks. So also along those lines, there is a plan to perhaps hopefully go back to a hybrid model or in-person and full-time might be more challenging. But what criteria do you think should be used in evaluating the plan as the school year progresses? And how would you address any disparities between economically or racially disadvantaged students and those in more privileged households?
So are you talking specifically about the reopening plans? The return to school plans and how that rolls out?
Yes, and the impact on the children.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the, the criteria for which groups to prioritize has been pretty clear from, have been pretty clear from the beginning. And I certainly support the idea that our most marginalized and at-risk student populations and, you know, most at-needs student populations should have priority in returning to schools. You know, special education students, you know, free, those who are on free and reduced lunch. Those, those are the students we should prioritize. And then, you know, and then whoever chose the in-person return. I think we are fairly divided, about 45% to 55%, 45% want to return, about 55% or so are choosing to stay remote. So after those populations, those most in need, then I think we can try to accommodate as many families as possible.
And what steps would the board take to make sure that the kids on each learning pathway are not falling behind? So if the online has been more challenging for some, how will everybody, you know, be kept moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, I think our educators are doing an incredible job trying to reach every student and trying to create that sense of connection. And I think it's going to be those relationships that students develop with their teachers that is going to be the most helpful and the most crucial. So I think as long as students can maintain that connection. And I think there's this assumption, I think, that in-person is going to be automatically far superior to online, right? That somehow, once those students return, there's going to be an automatic disadvantage for the students that are, that stay remote. I'm not sure that that will happen. I think we will have to see. You know, thus far, you know, I wish my children were back in school and they don't love online learning. But I also don't think that they're not learning anything, right? So I think we'll have to see what happens when we do have these two different populations and address whatever challenges occur there. But I don't think we should assume that automatically those students who return to school are going to be, you know, far ahead of the students who stay remote.
Thank you. I'll let Greg take the next one.
Thanks. So the, the next, the next few are moving away from COVID a little bit here. So several years ago, District 65 passed a funding referendum. And this is something that the DPOE had endorsed. I believe it was at the election four years ago and we helped campaign for. I would like to hear your thoughts on the current state of the District 65 budget and current and future priorities. What do you see as the biggest financial challenge faced by the district? And what actions would you like to see the board take to address future projected deficits?
Yeah. I think, you know, looking into it now, we, we got the hard copy of the board budget book just recently. So I've been looking in much closer detail at it. And I think the structural deficit has been with us for a really long time. So I guess part of it is I wish there had been more, you know, meaningful adjustments to, to not continue to have a structural deficit. And I think the fact is that we are, we have more expenses than we have revenue. And so we do have to figure out where to rein in those expenses because I think in the short term, our revenues are not going to increase, right? Given the economic challenges that we're facing, we are going to have to look at efficiencies and potential cuts. What should we prioritize in that? I think my board colleagues have mentioned looking at all the programs and seeing how successful they are. We really do have to assess what is the ROI on these, on these programs that we have invested in. Should we continue to invest in them? Should we continue to invest in them in a more efficient way, in a different way? But I think with, while also keeping very clear to what our values are, right? When we make those kinds of assessments. Our equity goals are closing the opportunity gap. We can't just kind of abandon those goals when we're faced with a budget challenge. I think we have to lead with our values. I think that's really important. You know, I've heard, you know, a budget is a moral document as well as numbers, right? So we have to be very clear about what our values are and how to protect those values moving forward.
Thank you. So the next one is, is also on the budget. Do you feel that the budget process at District 65 is transparent and accessible, both to parents and to the community at large? And are there any changes you'd like to see made to that process?
Yeah, I think it's transparent. I, I guess I would want, you know, the accessibility, I think all the information is there, right? It's, it's available on the website. It's available in different ways. That has been communicated through email and stuff like that. Are families accessing them? Do they know where these, you know, these documents exist? Maybe we could do a better job of pointing people towards where these documents live and maybe even how to read the budgets and what they, what they're communicating. So I hope we can do that. I think the thought exchange that was just launched is a way to get that input and see where the misperceptions are, where the, where there are gaps that we may need to fill in terms of informing the community, you know, about what percentage of expenses goes to what activities, what can and can't be adjusted, what are fixed costs, what are, you know, variable costs, things like that.
Okay. And the final question I have on the budget here comes to us from one of our members who wanted to know more about the budget for this year, which includes a $1.5 million increase for staffing based on program and enrollment needs when enrollment actually dropped this year.
I think, I'm not exactly sure which positions they're talking about, but I know that we were hiring an English language, an ESL specialist. That's one of the positions I remember seeing. Again, that's not dependent on just number of students, right? It's dependent on student needs. Or if we have to hire an additional paraprofessional, that's not, again, that's not dependent on student enrollments. It's really about student needs. So I think we have to make those distinctions and make sure that we are meeting student needs that we are obligated to meet.
Thank you very much. So I believe the next section, Mara, if you want to take over?
Sure. We have another question from one of our members who has children in the D65 schools. So as Democrats, we believe in a commitment to racial justice and equity. So what have you done to center students who are part of historically marginalized communities?
I mean, I think this was before my joining the board, but I think the development of a racial equity impact tool is really important so that we have a way to assess whatever we're doing, whatever initiatives that we're launching, whatever big changes that we're making, that we are reviewing it through, you know, a racial equity lens. Who does this impact and how does it impact? Does it serve our most marginalized students? And how are we supporting our educators in their anti-racist pedagogy, right? Everyone is at a different point in our journey. We are constantly learning. We are constantly having to, you know, examine our own implicit biases and ways to teach the curriculum in a more culturally responsive way. So I think, you know, all of those things have to be part of all of our considerations. So I think that's a big, big step in that direction.
Thanks. And I wanted to get your thoughts also on the movement by a group in Evanston towards opening a school in the fifth ward. What are your thoughts about that idea?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I first learned that there used to be a fifth ward school there a few years ago when I was reading Friends Disappear, I think. And how that effort to desegregate Evanston schools really put the burden on the Black community, right? Where students were bussed out. And that has persisted. And, and I think the unfairness of that, when people are always touting their neighborhood schools and the ability to walk to their schools. And I have benefited from having my children be able to walk to Lincoln every day and to walk to Nichols and the value of that. So why can't all our students have that, you know, and not have to be bussed out of their neighborhoods? So yeah, I think we need to look at that and what, what will it take to open a fifth ward school? I think that definitely has to be part of the conversation.
Thank you.
So the, the next few questions are about your time on the board. And of the incumbents, you're probably our shortest-termed yet. But when you first joined the school board back in March, what was your number one priority? And I know you, you addressed this a little bit in your introduction. But I wanted to ask as well if you feel you've achieved that goal that you set for yourself?
Well, I don't know that I had a number one priority because I was, my approach to any new position is, I'm here to first learn and listen, right? So that was my, I mean, I had a list of things that I thought were important that I presented in my interview. Hiring more Black and Brown teachers, you know, culturally relevant curriculum. Like those are things that I still want us to move toward even more than we have already. And, you know, I got involved in the school community because of the equity concerns. So, you know, what are my goals for the board? All of the equity goals that have been articulated already and that, you know, that Dr. Horton is committed to and was hired to help the district move toward. So first and foremost, I think that's why I'm here. That's why I'm serving is because of the, the equity goals of the district. And, and I think, I firmly believe that that doesn't just serve Black and Brown students. You know, I want my students, my own children to be in an equitable school system, in a place that honors everyone's experience and background and abilities. So, you know, I don't think of it as, as I'm doing this for, just for some other community, but really for all of us and for my own children.
And so of your, of your time on the board, what are, if any, are there, of the board decisions do you most disagree with?
I don't know that there, you know, I think we work very much by discussion and consensus. I don't think there's a specific decision that comes to mind where there was great disagreement. So it's been very collaborative and congenial thus far. Again, I've only been here six months, so I'm sure there will be, there may be some disagreements in the future. But thus far, I think it's been very, we've all agreed on our, on our big goals. And I think that's, that's heartening, that, that we, we have a vision and I think a superintendent who shares that vision.
Okay. So on the flip side of that coin, what decision of the board are you most proud of?
Well, I think, um, I think supporting our superintendent during this unprecedented, challenging time has been, I mean, it's taken most of our energy and focus and time. So I think that has been, you know, that's been top of mind. And I think we have been supportive of Dr. Horton's prioritizing of student safety at the same time trying to ensure that there's a robust online learning option, right? I mean, you know, I'm thinking about back to March, you know, when we were all so panicked and so afraid of what this thing was that was coming toward us and the scrambling that we had to do. And I remember in my own work as well, I mean, it was just constant, things were changing by the hour, right? We'd get an email, we'd have to adjust, we'd have to redo our communications out to our students and our faculty and our, you know, administrators and our staff. It was by the hour. And then when you, you know, when you got through that quarter and that semester, when we got through the, the school year, it was like, okay, now we have to look towards the fall. Now we have to spend the summer really focused on what's going to happen in the fall. And I think it's an incredible testament to Dr. Horton that he came in, in the middle of a pandemic, working with the interim superintendents before he was even slated to start and to, to get us all to, you know, remote learning, like building an entire online learning apparatus in less than three months. So being able to support that effort, being able to approve budget expenditures to support that effort, I think was, you know, I was happy to be proud of that, a part of that.
And Mara, do you want to take the last question?
I do. This sort of a distillation of all of the other questions and something that I find interesting also as a parent. As, you know, more, more people will be getting vaccinated in the coming months, hopefully the prospect of returning in person in the fall is more likely. What kinds of things do you think need to be considered as all of the students who have had vastly different experiences over the past year are all returning to the classrooms, hopefully returning to the classrooms? And how, you know, what kinds of things should the district be looking at proactively in preparation for that so it isn't as much of a scramble
Yeah.
fully in the fall than it was in March?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I've been turning that over in my mind too. Like what will this experience be like of students returning to the classroom? And I also think about like my own, I haven't seen my office since March too. And I think about the strangeness of returning to that too. I think first and foremost, I think we have to allow space and opportunity for our students to process their experiences in the past year. I read this great Facebook post from a New York superintendent or former superintendent. And I plan to share that with my board colleagues and Dr. Horton as well, about listening to our students' stories, right? They're going to have a lot to say and process about their experiences. And I hope that there's opportunity to do that. You know, when, when students, when children go through traumatic experiences, you know, there's play therapy and art therapy and those are really important. And I, I think about that, right? What should our curriculum look like to help our students process their experience? At the same time, I have heard of students who have thrived with online learning that, you know, without the distractions of the classroom, without, you know, worrying about bullying or teasing, without, you know, the anxiety of maybe the social dynamics of an in-person classroom that they've really been able to focus and learn for the first time, right? So I don't think we should dismiss what that tells us, right? About how we might rethink our learning environment and how we can integrate technology in a smart and meaningful way, right? So that we provide different access points. I think in online education, there is a lot of, in education generally, there is a lot of discussion about universal design for learning, right? How do we design learning that is accessible to all learners? And it doesn't have to look the same as long as students can achieve the same outcomes and learn the same material, but how they learn it may look different, right? So I think we do need to think creatively about, you know, how do we use all these tools that now we've been forced to use? Maybe we can think more carefully and intentionally about which tools we want to keep and integrate into the in-person experience as well. So I think there are multiple ways, like the social emotional piece has to be there, the tech piece, the academic piece. I think all of those have to be creatively re-analyzed and reassessed.
Thanks. It'll be a challenge for sure.
Absolutely. Yes.
I think that was our last question. Would you like to add any final words?
Yeah, I guess, um, I think, you know, education is fundamentally a social process. It really has to do with the relationships that we have. In my own teaching experience, if I haven't been able to develop trust with a student, that student is not going to learn as well from me. And the students that I think about and I And the students that I think about, and I still kind of ponder about is like, why wasn't I able to reach that student, you know? And then the most, the most, you know, amazing memories I have of teaching are the students who initially did not trust me, but I earned their trust and learning happened and change happened. You know, those are my greatest, you know, kind of triumph, success stories. But the students I didn't reach, I have to think about, why wasn't I able to reach them? Why wasn't I able to get them to trust me so that they let down their defenses or guards or perceptions and really open up and learn, right? I say this as part of my platform and on my website, that learning is an act of vulnerability. So how do we create spaces and opportunity and conditions for students to be vulnerable? And I think what I am heartened to see and what I will be eager to follow are all the efforts to address culture and climate at our schools, right? Because I think that gets right to what are the conditions for learning that we're creating for our students, all of our students, right? So if there are conditions of learning that are not supportive of one population than another, then we have to really think about that, right? Like are our tweak classrooms really working for our Latinx students, for our Spanish-speaking students, right? Because that's what it's, you know, those are the main students that it's designed to serve. So are they able to be vulnerable? Are they able to be themselves so that they can learn? So I think fundamentally, that's my philosophy as an educator, right? As a teacher, in my experience as a teacher, that's fundamental. So I hope, you know, to support educators to create those kinds of learning environments.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So at the end here, if you're willing to stick around for a minute or two, I see we have somebody who's joined us to observe. If you're willing to, if they have a question, would you, would you mind sticking around and answering it? I always like to open this up at the end.
Yeah.
Sure. So I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself if you have a question. It looks like they don't. Okay. So I just want to throw in a last reminder here for anybody watching that the endorsement election begins on January 17th. You can cast your votes up until January 23rd. And if you aren't a member yet, just go onto our website and sign up there. And thank you so much for joining us.
Opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Have a great day. Bye.
Bye-bye.